Item one on the agenda is approving our minutes from two weeks ago, the May 5 meeting. Tina's got a motion on the minutes as written. Ed's got the second. All those in favor of the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those no, that carries. For every public hearing tonight, I'll just kind of say this now, this is how the thing's going to work. This is a big, long agenda for us, so even for us up here, this is going to be kind of a heavy lift. It's going to be a long night, a couple hours. Everything on the agenda tonight is going to follow the same basic format. So there's three public hearings, but then each one of them has a series of resolutions that are embedded in the hearing. So we're going to go over to our city staff, they're going to give us a presentation, big picture overview, we're going to ask any clarifying questions we have. When that's done, we'll open up the public hearing. So whether there's, well, I guess two of them have three motions and one of them's got six. But the presentation will cover, you know, everything in the public hearing. So come on up, we usually give the benefit to the applicant first, or representative of the applicant. Name, address, company you're representing, et cetera. Come up, cycle through one at a time, tell us your story. We won't interrupt you, you don't interrupt us later, that's the deal we'll give you at the beginning. When public hearing's done, then we'll come back up here, we'll discuss it, somebody will make a motion to do something, and we'll vote on the motion. We're an advisory board of the city council, so then that goes forward to the city council, and you get to do the whole thing over again in a week. And then we just move on to the next one. So everything is going to follow the exact same format. Here we go, public hearing, first one up is the Blaze conditional use permit. That one has three resolutions to it, and we look to Harry Davis.
Mr. Chair?
I'm working on it. Just taking a moment. Getting just the...
So I'll just kind of launch into it just a little bit. So this is a item that is coming back to the planning commission. So the item was tabled at the very last planning commission.
Okay.
The planning commission supported, or generally supported, the request, gave staff some indications as to what they would like to see for findings, so staff has put together some amended resolutions, one amended resolution in particular. So the recommendations at this point would be to forward all three of the resolutions, the first one which is the conditional use permit, the last two which are four different variances. You know, again, city staff doesn't see a practical difficulty with this, so city staff can't support the request going forward, but we understand that the planning commission would like to see it going forward.
Do we have questions for Harry or Leslie Young? Sam?
Mr. Chair, so none of this has been brought forward to city council, because it was all tabled at the very last meeting.
I think what you're talking about is that separate motion you had to get some direction. Yeah, that's not going to be coming for a while, that's not going to be in front of this, that's a separate discussion for later. It's not going to come before this. Other questions for Harry? We'll open up to public input, if we have Mr. Blaze here, any of the other neighbors again. Public input on the Blaze conditional use permit and the CUP and the variance. Okay, then we'll shut down public hearing, so that's done. Back up here to the planning commission, there's three resolutions in front of us, the CUP, the variance for the front yard, and then the variance for the larger accessory structure than allowed.
Mr. Chairman?
Tina?
I would move that we send Resolution 2025 XXX approving a CUP for an accessory structure at 1216th 1st Street Northeast to the city council with a...
Second on that? Mike's got the second, Tina's got the motion on the CUP as presented thus, we'll vote on them one at a time. All those in favor of the CUP, say aye.
Aye.
Those no, that carries. Now the variance for the accessory structure in the front yard. Discussion, motion. James got the motion. Bart's got the second on that one. Any discussion? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no, that carries. Final one.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we send Resolution 2025 XXX approving the variances for a larger accessory structure than allowed, and for more accessory use and structure area than primary use and structure at 1216th 1st Street Northeast. Send to the council for approval.
For a second.
I'll second you.
Steve's got the second, seconds before Bart. Discussion on that, did you have your hand up? It's fine, then I'll go. I'll be voting against this one. I was in favor when we talked last week, I was in favor of creating a whole separate new zoning district that addresses lots that are larger than five acres and everything else. We don't have that yet. So in absence of that, I concur with the staff report, that there's not the variance requirements that we need to grant. So that's, I just wanted to explain my vote before we voted on it. I'll be voting no for those reasons.
Chairman, I'm going to vote yes. This has been before us more than once, and my tenure on here, I can think of one is the Dubé Garage, it was out on the southeast side of town, probably wasn't as big as this, but it was close. And that even had an extended driveway to get to the back of the residence. On my end of town, there's two homes with huge buildings. One was trying to be designated as a horse barn, and I know it was basically a wood shop, so you can say whatever it is, but has it affected the neighborhood? No, it looks good, it's been up for sale once, the thing sold within a month, so I think it's a great addition. The tax money that's going to be generated is going to help everything, so as far as I'm concerned, yes.
Bart?
I just want to clarify, is Commissioner Green's question from last time going to be presented with this?
I'll go to Harry with the clarification on how that's going to get in front of the council.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so this will be brought forward alongside these resolutions, that particular motion that was made.
Okay.
I asked to clarify, so when a motion gets made, it's like minded, is it up to the staff? Is it a matter of... So I'm just wondering where the disconnect is.
Sure, Mr. Chair, I think that there is an issue with city council making a decision on a particular item before it's actually formally brought to them, so I think that's kind of issue one. Issue two, this is not something that we would, for lack of a better term, blindside city council at a regular meeting, it's more something that we would bring at a discussion, like a city council agenda session, or...
Work session.
Work session, yes, thank you. That we would bring first at a work session in order to talk through some of these issues before we went with some sort of formal vote during the regular meeting. Anything you'd like to add?
No, just based on my experience, it could be a few months before that ends up being presented. Because of the way their committee's structured, you know, the way their agendas are, I know the city administrators involved, the mayor's involved in the agenda setting, the council, but yeah, it, there's, I never had an expectation that it was going to be in front of the council before we saw that. That's just not how the city works.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just to go on a little bit further, so the city administrator wants to understand a little bit better about what's going on a agenda before it even gets to city council, so there's some discussion internally within staff as to how is this presented, is it presented in a certain way in order to try to have council, you know, for example, there's an EAW coming up. Well, we might want to explain a little bit more about what an EAW is before we even get into exactly what's coming up. There's, staff needs some time in order to kind of work through any particular complications that might arise by just, you know, just taking, take a particular concept and then just kind of throwing it at city council.
Mr. Chairman? I made the motion because this is the way to bring it to the city council as quickly as possible. Because now they have to address our recommendations as they go forward, and they're going to recognize that we don't have what it is that we need to pass it within our regular rules. And so by making the motion to approve it and send it to council, it introduces the concept and the idea to them, and then can follow up, it leads into future work session. This is putting the issue front and center in front of council.
Other, Sam?
I absolutely agree, which is why I want to... Yes, yes, no. I want to see that they're... Want to approve it, but...
Other discussion, I'll just add, I'm not confused. I know what I'm voting on, I don't think it necessarily looks messy. I understand what everybody's saying, I don't think there's a great deal of contention here, and maybe we could have done a better job explaining it two weeks ago, but, I mean, as I'm running through my head, DRC's got to look at it, it's got to wash through the city attorney, I mean, it would just be weeks before any, and maybe we could have done a better job of explaining that. And, you know, I'll take the blame as that is chair, you know, when we process with the motion. I could have done a better job setting the expectation on that time. So we've got the motion, we've got a second, we've had some discussion, anything else? We're ready to vote. All those in favor of Tina's motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
No. Unless anybody thinks otherwise, it passed 5-2. We're done with 3A, and that goes to city council eight days from now?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. 3B, mighty fine coffee, comprehensive plan amendment, zoning map amendment, preliminary plat, final plat, variances, conditional use permit, and again, we look to Harry Davis, and before Harry even starts, it's a reminder, Bart's got a conflict, so that's part of why he just left, so he won't be part of this discussion. Harry?
Mr. Chair, I have to go on to...
Good evening, commissioners, just presenting to you mighty fine coffee at 127, actually, 123 14th Street Northwest. Before you, you will be making, reviewing and making recommendations for a comprehensive plan amendment, a zoning map amendment, a preliminary and final plat, four separate variances, and two conditional use permits. Applicant is Mr. Steve Underdahl is here, on behalf of Nathaniel Cunningham, owners of the property, or Jordan... To permit a construction of a drive-through coffee shop. The applicant is, the property is within the contents of... Largely residential to the south and east, industrial to the north and west, and fully developed traffic route. Two separate parcels which are to be combined, the one on the... The eastern boundary was a former residential parcel, which has now been vacant for a few years. The parcel to the west was a site of a former laundromat, dogwash, it had various businesses, and it's had very many proposals. Large portion of the property has impervious surfaces and drive-through curbs to access As you can see, there is an existing sign that is to be removed, and it's not part of this application. The structure is proposed to be reused, residential roofline, which somewhat contextualizes the neighborhood, which is behind it. It's very faint, so I'm hoping you'll follow with me, but... Supposed conceptual layout, and it's very well intact, saw path is behind it. This is, if I start, I'll start north and go to the southeast. Mentioned the previously impervious surface that had the drive-through... Was to be removed, this would be green space, there will be, I'm going to go east, the structure will be reutilized and reconfigured with an internal structure for both the drive-up restaurants, amounts of coffee roastery, and then all of the drive-in. Two access driveways on 14th Street Northwest. There is a drive-through on the interior ground through, and the proposal right now, I would fore there to be three cars stacking before the proposed menu board, and four cars up to the drive-through window to access the site for... ... purposes and parking. There's an additional tandem driveway on the eastern side, which would follow along in this direction on the southeast to access parking for both customers and staff, and then the opportunity to exit the site going directly westerly onto Second Avenue, utilizing this drive-through. Also provided for the site is the required ADA parking with handicap ramps that are used for front door access right here. It's very compactly tied up to the side of the building, and there's a parking lot as well. So the particulars of the site, which are also going to be considered in the last portion of your recommendations, is due to the nature of the size and construction of the property, piece of variance is considered, whether this is applicable. A typical setback for parking in drive-aisles is 10 feet. Because of the design for turning radiuses to accommodate the various restaurant, this somewhat limits the ability to tighten up that, so the drive-ile is pushed at the very tightest portion, four feet, to the property line. Really is no wiggle room for that. To accommodate the street effect between the adjoining residential properties to the west, to the south, and the east, a privacy fence is proposed. The balance of the site that is not impervious is proposed to be landscape and to accommodate stormwater management, and in detail that is in your packet, and responded to by the city engineer. Further for your review in the site, as I'm going into great detail, is there is existing easement, private agreement easement between this property owner, which is a residential property, and the property, and the property owners of this, and essentially, what happens is there is parking that was previously agreed to, that is not to be imposed on by the commercial aspect or nature of the proposal. So that is a standalone and island, what further constricts and adds this little piece of easement to the... That there, we have found that there has been some construction of the residence over the property lines, which, so it's highly unusual, sometimes happens, but the easement will allow those what we consider existing non-conformities to continue. Request before you tonight, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan amendment, the first recommendation, what we have is establish residential neighborhood, and we are proposing, and the applicant's proposing, a commercial residential neighborhood. And while one would say that the neighborhood is substantially residential in nature, because it is on established streets and so near other commercial and business properties, this would kind of thread the needle and be a little bit of a... If you want to stop me anytime, that's fine. Secondly, the variances, because of the complexity and the order of the stacking of this deck, there are variances that must occur in advance of other motions. So, and for the first two variances that we're proposing that you consider would be prior to the preliminary plat, which would be the variance issue is accommodating a lot area that's smaller than the minimum. The requirement for the C2 district is 20,000, however, because of the nature of the property constriction, there really is no additional land area, the proposal is 16,834 feet, which is a variance of 3,177 square feet, and staff supports that requirement. Property is also within the Shoreland overlay district, there is a requirement that the property have no more than 25% impervious surfaces. Proposal right now with all of the, the extra impervious to this property is 52%, with a variance of 4,477 square feet. But we also provided this table for you, for your review, and if I can go through this briefly, it might help. So as we've noticed, the, there is a compromise we feel is necessary or should be considered because the area right now is already, has a 8% impervious surface on it. When you add the existing impervious surface of the commercial lot, it's 63% saved, either parking or structure. If you were to look historically at the residential parcel before the house was there, and just looking in consideration of the places where people drive and parked and sidewalks, that did meet about a 25%. You combine them, and it reached 38%. So while the increase is beyond the 25%, it's logistically only a 14% increase. And in your packet, you'll see the nature of the methodology that the applicant has done to meet the stormwater requirement and to meet and exceed them. Might add, they are here today, should you have questions. Preliminary and final plat, consolidation of these two parcels, dedication of easements, grade one, subdivision one lot from two. The zoning, the zoning map amendment, the zoning map amended request to change the existing zoning from a C1 neighborhood commercial to a highway, to a C2 highway commercial. The difference is there is the addition of the drive-through, which is the distinguishing factor in changing that zoning district. Two, which we bundled together, so one conditional use permit is required for a conditional use permit in the C2 highway commercial. Even though we requested the change of zoning map amendment, it isn't free and clear until the conditional use permit is applied for and considered. All the findings are there to be supportive of that measure. Additionally, a conditional use permit has been proposed for a drive-through, which is required by the property being within the Shoreland district overlay. So if you see the map above here, the star right there is location of the property. So it's well within there. And last but not least, variances specific to the property that I mentioned earlier when we were talking about the site plan, the lot is constricted by, logistically, the requirement of 20,000 square feet. Proposal 16,834 feet, of variance of 3,177 square feet. The impervious surface requires 20,834 square feet, 277 square feet, and the... Hope I did that at the duplicate side, sorry guys. So the other one is the less than 10%, less than 10-foot setback for parking in loading And reduction of staffing spaces. This is considered, while one might say that, well, we probably could cram cars in, and we could probably add another car in there, our ordinance does restrict car lengths to be measured at a 20-foot length, so also, we're requesting, their request of variances, three cars before the menu board, so that cars are not allowed by the design of the site plan to park on top of pedestrian walkways, either entering or exiting. As I mentioned, this is the additional site constraint, is the exhibit of the easement from the private agreement, which you have in your packets. This is how the... Photo for what is occurring on site, which will be largely allowed to remain. Applicant seeks multiple approvals for the purpose of redeveloping properties for the drive-through and these structures and properties. Applicant has provided a project site to demonstrate there is adequate program of what they're proposing, the vehicle circulation, the drive-through.
There's a lot to unpack here, there's six separate motions, a very thorough presentation. Do we have questions for Leslie before we go out to public hearing? I don't mean to jump first, I usually wait, but, so my question, can you pull up, is it going to be easy, kind of an area zoning map? Because it's, one of the lots is currently C1, one of them's residential. In the request to go to C2, what I'm worried about, is it a spot zone? What's the nearest C2? Harry might be able to answer it for me.
Yeah, sure, we can answer that. So Leslie actually found in the middle of reviewing this property that the other property was actually zoned. Both properties are currently zoned, but we don't really, you know, if we get more into the spot zoning, if we talk a little bit more about overall the land uses that are involved in C2 versus E1 versus the... I think generally when we're looking at, it's a little bit more of a collector, you know, more of a leader up through the city. Generally, when we're looking at commercial along a major route, that's probably the best case in all. So, you know, if there's a spot zoning, staff doesn't see it as a...
Can I still see a zoning map, though?
Absolutely.
Because I want to see what the old Fairville Foods is, what Fairville Woolen is, I just, I...
Are you able to see it?
Okay, is that, is that the best we're going to get? Okay, so, yellow is our what?
Probably our two.
And the light purple, which appears to be Fairville Foods, is...
That's the I1 light industrial.
So there's no C2 anywhere in the neighborhood?
Then it's south, maybe.
I'm curious, oh, what is, remember, we did the old QuickTrip, which is now under construction as a laundromat, is that a C1 or C2?
That is a C1.
Okay, thank you, that helps me. Okay, other questions for these folks? If not, we'll go out to public hearing, public input, I know Mr. Underdahl's here, I don't know if the applicant's here. Oh, right in front of us, that podium right there.
Steve Underdahl of Procon, I'm representing your project here, and I put the... And for any questions that you might have, Mr. Chair, a question about a C2, the north, where the QuickTrip is right now, that is a C2 zoning area. Mostest one I can think of right now.
Do we have any questions for Steve, while he's up here? Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public that wants to talk to us about this one? Sir?
Shepherd, I'm a resident here in Fairville, and I just want to say I support my son, I want to do his practice. Thank you all of you for considering it. Been amazing, represented by this community. I probably would have left by now if I wouldn't for them. Just want to see their business do well, and I want to encourage all of you to do whatever you can to help them.
I just need an address for the minutes, I just need that.
Sorry, what's that?
Your address.
Oh, I'm at 112 3rd Street.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Al Marata. I'm on 14th Street, just a few doors down, 17 to be exact. Just to shed some color commentary on, on the area there, I drive it every day, constantly aware of traffic in there. This would just be a dramatic improvement to the entire area. Quite frankly, that building right there is an eyesore right now. It's a lot to be run down. And up and down the street, there's positive feedback for coffee. Thank you very much.
We're residents of 111 14th Street, and we're in favor of the coffee shop. Our concern would just be during the construction, at what point would the fence be put up? We have children that live there as young as two years old, so we're just wondering, like, as far as when the, the fence would go up, could it go up before any of the big machines and construction start?
I'll let our staff try to answer that. Usually the fences are more towards the end, but it can vary.
Actually, going to pivot that to the applicant. Typically, like, if it's a decorative fence, those are put up as part of the finishing requirements before the building interior models would get a certificate of approval. However, if there is any protections or construction fencing, I'm sure the applicant would be willing to consider something like that.
Yeah, we.
He's right there.
Perfect. We, we host a lot of events. That's, that's my parents' house, and we host a lot of events. We have the, the large yard that is to the east of it, and so we do have a lot of people come over. So if it, if that is something that can be.
Before you leave, I just also need your name. So one person gave you a name, no address. Now you got address and no names. Sorry, I just need both.
Tiffany Soto.
Thank you so much. And also, for the record, there was a series of head nods in, in basic agreement to that part of the conversation. Okay, other public input on this one. Want to shut it down early? Good. Once the door's shut, it's shut. There you go.
Sabrina Rourke at 318 Central Ave. You're welcome. Mighty Fan Coffee. I've only known about them for about a year, but I do know that they're military. I had no idea about most of the veteran projects and ideas within Fairville, similar to my friend Shep. Didn't really want to stick around Fairville, but these guys have made it a bit more of a home. Plus, coffee. Can't really go wrong there. So I'm in favor, big time. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, now we're going to come back up here to the planning commission. Thank you on public input. I doubt we're going to go back out now. We got six separate resolutions. I don't care how we do it and what. We can discuss everything globally, but we need these resolutions in that order, as Leslie laid out, when it gets to be of discussion. Steve?
This is for staff. Was there any discussion about, this intersection is highly, has a high amount of traffic. And you have a warehouse across the street that semis actually go out into 14th Street to back up into the loading docks. And my concern is, this drive-through is less than two car lengths away from the, the entrance to the intersection or the crosswalk. And I just, I, a lot of times, I can see three to four cars backing up on the stop sign, and I'm wondering how this is going to work. Is there a, a point at some point to restrict this to a right turn only, or that's not even been thought of?
Restricting traffic onto Second Avenue or restricting, you mean the exit drive onto Second Avenue?
This is, this is exiting onto 14th Street, correct?
The exit from the drive-through exits onto 14th Street. The exit, if it were to, if they were to pull out of the drive-through lane or leave the parking area, they would exit onto Second. So there's two egresses.
Right.
You're here, you go out.
This is Second, this is 14th.
I know, but she's saying there's two exits.
But the door to pick up your coffee is, if you're going to pick up the coffee, you would have to exit onto 14th, correct?
That is correct. That is correct.
Through the drive-through.
And that's where 90% of the traffic is going to be. I mean, you're not, let's face facts.
So staff did, you know, have some discussion about this at our, at our line review committee meetings, and the primary, while that, that is one consideration, too, having a right-hand turn only was not a discussion. We did talk about having additional signage to make sure that there is adequate caution in exiting the drive-through, since it is somewhat of a blind corner of the building. That was another consideration, too. But your point is, is taken, so that is something that has not been, was, was mentioned by the city engineer or public.
Because, just, it's an extreme concern, because part of the issue is you go, it's, that area to the north is a racetrack, and then it goes to a left turn, and right, the right lane is supposed to go straight ahead, and I, I'd say on, on a month, I see six to eight cars that are in the left turn lane, well over 30 miles an hour, rocketing right through that left turn lane. And signage and direction is poor at the, at the least, but the amount of traffic that's on 14th Street and the amount of, is unbelievable. I mean, people use, they'll cut up and go through Central to avoid Second, and they'll go up 14th Street to go some way to avoid the city. So there's, I mean, I, like every aspect of this thing, except for that fact that it's exiting on a really bad intersection.
Thank you, Steve. Other discussion from the group? Tina?
Mr. Chairman, I was actually quite thrilled to see the redevelopment of this parcel. I have traveled this road frequently, getting out to the fairgrounds, to the ice rink, to Menards, to the, the QuickTrip, and I think that they've been creative in finding a solution for redeveloping a, to me, a blighted parcel. And I appreciated the fact that the DNR wrote a letter saying that the, the variance request for impervious surface, that they were okay with that, because that's not common for them to agree to changing impervious surface. And so I just felt like there was a lot of effort put into this, to put it together. The concept of redevelopment, how do we make this work? I just want to say kudos to staff working with the applicant and packaging it together for redevelopment of what is a blighted parcel.
Thank you, Tina. Other discussion?
I've got a couple of questions. A couple of questions about the location of the, would be the order space, where you have drive of an order. So they do, they do tend to make a lot of noise, and they are surrounded by houses on three sides. Is that brought up by anybody, or any concerns from any city residential units there, that the speaker going off at 6:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning is going to make a lot of noise?
So the discussion was held with the applicant's representative about noise. So by our ordinance, the speaker has to be positioned so that it's away from the residential neighbor, and so if you look at it, it's positioned toward the building. They have the ability with the technology today to monitor the sound transference from the order board itself. They're simply approving a loudspeaker and them having the opportunity to have a voice command doesn't mean it has to stay that way. You know, if you, there are other opportunities, another drive-through is where menu boards are simply that, a menu board, and then you drive up an order. They would like the opportunity to be able to have the lead time to prepare the coffee. You know, and one thing also to consider is, because it's primarily a coffee shop, it's a little bit different than a food generating restaurant, where you're going to be having a little bit longer lead time. So hopefully, we're considering the idling time of, of an engine to be somewhat limited or reduced than a typical drive-through restaurant. But your point is well taken, and if I'm understanding the applicant, from what they've suggested to me, that they wanted to have the latitude to keep the ordering portion of the menu board. But please remember, our ordinances are, do touch on becoming a nuisance to adjoining neighborhoods, so should it ever become an issue, it can be brought back to planning staff and to our code violation officers, and we can investigate and have more discussions with the.
Other discussion? I'll go. Doing this long enough, always in the back of my head, I just kind of have this motto, try to find a way to yes. I'm trying to get to yes on all six, having trouble with some of them, but I want to get there. You helped me quite a bit on the rezoning, because I would have preferred to see it stay C1, but if it's got a drive-through, it's got to be C2. I hate spot zoning, but where else in town would you be across the street from Light Industrial? So that, that gives it the uniqueness, I think, to get me to yes on that one. As far as the comp plan stuff, I mean, I was in all those meetings. That has been a business my entire life. I don't know how long I was a laundromat, but was it like a neighborhood grocery store or something? I mean, that has always been a, some sort of business at that corner. So comp plan, that's an easy yes. I'm just kind of, you know, checking the boxes, impervious surface. I think Tina made a good point. DNR is fine with it, I'm fine with it. I usually kind of really dig my heels in on that. The rezoning, I'm getting there, and if I get there on the rezoning, then everything else falls into place. I also think, had there been a handful of neighbors showing up, saying, I don't want cars idling, I don't want the noise, I don't want this, I don't want this, I don't want this. If I heard those, that would have influence on me, but I heard the opposite. I heard neighbors saying, hey, this is going to help fix the neighborhood. There are times this system works, and today's one of them. Neighbor standing up and saying, hey, I think it's going to be a carryover. So thank you for coming down on a Monday. I think I'm getting to yes. Tina, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think too, maybe to answer the question on the noise, that privacy fence being as tall as it is, is going to be a shield, because the noise is going to bounce back. I think that's really going to help with the neighboring that, and the fact that the one neighbor mentioned that there's, they have a large yard in between them and where the drive-through is. So yeah, so I think that helps, is the, the fence and. I like the, personally, I like the idea of being able to order and, and not have to wait and hold the whole lineup, because I think that backs it into the street. But if you can order, by the time you get there, your coffee's ready. Pick it up and go.
Ed's got his hand up.
To piggyback on that, just a question is, what's the general hours of operation?
They say it was, there will be some time that staff is there fairly early, with part of the roasting. You know, typical, 6:00 AM to, I want to say, no later than 8:00 PM at night.
Okay. Other, I guess I'll just take the floor real fast before other discussion. I heard Steve's point on the traffic at, at Second and 14th. Closest I ever get, came in my life to getting flattened on my bicycle was that intersection. Exactly what Steve was talking about, somebody flying right through the left turn lane. That intersection's terrifying, but I don't think we can expect these guys to fix that. That's not their problem. But I, I hear Steve, and, and I think where I would take solace is if there are people pulling out of that drive-through, and it's kind of a blind, and they're getting people smacked, if they're seeing their customers getting hit, or there are problems with the sidewalk blockage. I'm just trying to kind of play worst-case scenario here. But if there are those problems, that can be revisited as we, as we, you know, it, it would be something the business would revisit, but they clearly don't want their, their customers getting hit, pulled out of the parking lot. Other discussion with the group? There are six motions. We should divide the labor.
Mr. Chairman.
Sam?
Property at the corner of Second Avenue.
That's the motion?
Second.
Tina's got the second. That's on the comp plan amendment. Discussion on that motion. If not, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? That carries. Now, the resolution that's a variance in the impervious surface. Ooh, of course, the coverage. Thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes? Second? Tina's got the second on that one. That's the impervious surface and the always important coverage. Got a motion. Got a second. Hello? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? That one carries. We're done with that one. Now this is the rezoning to C2.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to send for approval ordinance 2025 XXX, approving the rezoning certain properties at the corner of Second Avenue Northwest and 14th Street Northwest to C2 Highway Commercial.
Second?
Second.
Sam's got the second. Got the motion and the second as presented, that one on the rezoning. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
That carries. For the rezoning, now preliminary and final plat. Harry?
Can I get some clarification on the no vote?
Steve had the no. Doesn't have to.
I don't have to, but I will. The, the traffic, I think, is, is a serious consideration, and given the C2 and the fact that nobody addressed the issue of the traffic, that's why I'm voting against that.
Okay, now, preliminary, final plat. Motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Got the plat motion? Ed's got the second on the plat motion. Discussion on the plat motion. Vote on the plat motion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
That carries. Steve's got the no. Four, excuse me, that was four. Five, now we're at the conditional use permit for C2 and Shoreland overly district. Sam's got the motion as written.
Second.
Tina's got the second. We're clear on the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? We'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye? All those opposed, no?
No.
Carries. Final one, variance for parking area setbacks and drive-through stacking spaces.
Make a motion to approve a variance in parking.
Your second? Ed's got the second on it. Where I'm trying to get to yes, I forgot about this one. Leslie, just remind me, how, how big is that variance again? Just give me the variance overview.
Six foot from the setback? Yep. Six feet from the 10-foot required setback.
There's a four-foot setback instead of the required 10. It requires four, and, and they can squeeze three. Thank you. Okay, we've got the motion, we've got the second. Is there discussion on it? We'll vote on it. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you, folks. Same thing, eight days from now, City Council. Final one up this evening, Malika Autobody, out on 20th Street. This one's.
I want Bart to come back in.
Bart?
Bart, go hunt down Bart. Thank you.
Okay, so Malika Autobody, it's vacation, preliminary, final plat, CUP. There'll be three resolutions there. I will just tap dance momentarily, since we're losing about 80% of our audience. And we're still looking for one of our commission members.
You could do little jazz hands while you're tapping.
Oh, okay, we're, we did find Bart. I honestly forgot about. I honestly forgot about you, sir. It's a good thing that they mentioned it. I would have left you in the hall.
I can't get content on.
Okay, we're back to a full body, Malika Autobody, I just mentioned it. It's a vacation, it's preliminary, final plat, it's a CUP. Harry, you got this one?
I do, Mr. Chair. Okay, so the items in front of you are from Malika Autobody. It's a vacation, preliminary, and final plat, and conditional use permit. Steve Underdahl submitted this on behalf of the property owner, Malika Autobody. Their location is 19 or 190 Twentieth Street Northwest. Here's kind of like a general Google's map, location map, and the, you know, sort of an aerial with the parcel lines outlined in yellow. And then the zoning map, the properties are again outlined in yellow, so it's right there at the corner of Twentieth and Second Avenue. The request in front of you all today is, the first one is to vacate a drainage and utility easement, that's along the northwest property line between the two properties that they want to combine. The plats are to combine those two properties. Probably the easiest way to show would be these, these two yellow boxes to the north, northwest, as well as this larger autobody shop parcel. And then the conditional use permit is for major auto repair, which is only allowed by conditional use permit in C2, as well as within Shoreland. This is just an exhibit, just to show where the vacation area is. It's this, this hatched area, and you can kind of tell between the lot that's on the outside of Lot 1, Block 1, it's Lot 3. It's the hatched area in between that and Lot 1, Block 1. On the left is the preliminary plat, so it kind of shows a little bit about the existing conditions for the property, but then final plat kind of clears all of that. It's really just focused on the property lines. It's actually a really good representation of the difference between the two. And then, this is a site plan, it's a building plan of the addition that they want to put onto the property. It's not an addition to the main building, it's just an additional building. What they would like to do out of this building is do alignments for vehicles. They're looking at, in addition of maybe, maybe a couple new employees, they are providing parking enough to satisfy that additional building, as well as the existing development. Generally, with the vacation, there's really not a whole lot of issues with this. Staff, staff supports the request. The preliminary and final plat, we went through some iterations with the applicant, and we've come to a conclusion of no issues with the submittals. One thing that I do want to note is that we are not recommending parkland fees for this. Not to get too far into it, but when you do the calculations of the additional commercial area, and the removal of a house, which would normally be, I think, a grand in parks fees, it's actually less of an impact for parks fees, so we're not recommending... Yeah, I know, I could, I could get into it a little bit more if needed, but...
Please don't. Now I'm confused.
Yeah, so generally, we're just not asking for parkland fees as a part of those requests, or we're not requesting it, or that we see need for it. MNDOT does support the plats, and has no issues with the plats as they're brought forward. For the conditional use permit, the conditional use permit does meet the criteria, and that's both for a normal conditional use permit within our own code, as well as the heightened conditional use permit criteria required for any property that is obstructing within Shoreland. This property just barely gets within Shoreland, and so we are applying those heightened criteria, but luckily, it meets all of those. In fact, the DNR has responded that they don't have any issues with the conditional use permit. In summary, it meets all of our zoning requests, or zoning requirements. So we have three motions today for this particular item. The first one is to forward the ordinance, which is to vacate the easement. The second one is to forward the resolution to City Council, and that would be for the preliminary and final plats. And then the last resolution would be to forward a conditional use permit for major auto repair in C2 and within Shoreland.
Thank you.
I'll put it, take any questions.
Do we have questions for Harry on this one? Tina?
I do. Mr. Chairman and Harry, could you go back to the vacation plat where you showed the hatch line? So it's been my experience that, you know, we see Block 1, and it's Lot 5, Lot 4, Lot 3, that they all have, they should have reciprocal easements for utilities, so that, in their lots also. So shouldn't we be vacating the easement in Lot 3? Isn't there an interior easement in Lot 3 on its southern and, and eastern boundary?
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I can kind of answer part of that, and the other one, I'll actually direct towards the applicant. So some of these older plats that we do find across Faribault actually don't have any easements on them. And so I think that this is that particular case, although I will defer some of that question to the applicant, just to kind of clarify and make sure they did their homework on it. So, but that's, that's generally what we're finding with, with these plats.
So the older plat doesn't have a utility easement on it, its perimeter?
Yeah, in fact, building the Malika Autobody shop here, they had to plat these properties, and so, you know, the easement that they're vacating, I think, was put in maybe two years ago. So it's a little bit similar to those that have been on the commission a little bit for CNS vending, where they platted an easement, and now they're removing it, even though they did it to themselves. This is kind of similar to that.
Other questions for Harry? We have the Malikas here, and Steve's still here. Yeah, that just made your life a lot easier.
Again, Steve Underdahl, now I'm representing Malika Autobody. Yes, as referenced here, back in '22, we were before planning for the original development, with really the same requests. So in a sense, this is just expanding those original requests to this additional property that they acquired. Kind of uneasement, yes, we have done, you know, our research, on the acquired property that's there. And it is actually a city ordinance that all new plats establish easements for going forward, that's why you get... There's going to be a lot of places around the community where you're going to have half Project we had just before us is going to be the same way there, there's a five-foot easement on your property, but you're not corresponding.
Does this have anything to do with the old 218 right away? It's every time we do anything in that neighborhood, we're tripping over ourselves with easements, and it all goes back to the original sin of the 218.
Our old plat, it goes back to the 1900s.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we do anything in that neighborhood without something there, vacating an uneasement. Okay, thank you, Steve. Do we have other questions for him? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for public input, public hearing. Now, we're back up here to the commission.
Chairman, I'll move that we pass ordinance for vacation and drainage easement.
Got a motion and a second on vacation of the drainage utility easement. Discussion on that at all? Vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That carries. Number two, then, now is the preliminary and final plats.
Make a motion to approve.
Mike's got the motion. Tina's got the second on that. Any discussion at all? Will vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? That one carries. Finally, the conditional use permit amendment for major auto repair, C2 Shoreland District.
I'll second it.
Steve's got the second, thank you. Got a motion and a second on the CUP. I know there hasn't been any discussion on this, but as it was presented by the applicant, this just falls right in the line. Much of what I was reading is, it's a continuation of what we saw in 2021. Great that things are going well there. That's why these went kind of without discussion, it seemed obvious. I've got a motion and a second, and the conditional use permit. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Carries. We're done with that. Thank you, folks. Final one this evening, it's an ordinance zoning text amendment to allow proof of parking in the commercial districts. Harry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is actually a staff-initiated amendment to our parking section, specifically when it comes to proof of parking, which is a concept that we've used, that we're currently using with industrial properties. What we've received is a lot of interest from site redevelopment, as well as just generally, commercial properties, to allow something very similar to what is currently allowed in industrial. In industrial, you can do proof of parking for sort of an uninhibited amount, as long as you are providing enough parking spaces for what you need. And staff has the ability later on, like, let's say, there's an industrial property in industrial use, that people are just parking all over the grass, or they put down a bunch of gravel illegally, and now people are parking on that. Well, staff has the ability at that point to say, well, you provided this proof of parking during the development side of things, and you've shown where you could put some additional spaces. You're now parking illegally, you're now parking on top of grass, or what have you. You know, this is the zoning violation that's needed in order to make sure that you build out the rest of your spaces. It's a very similar idea with commercial. The concern that some people had is that, you know, commercial properties might take it a little bit far, at least initially. And so staff is recommending, instead of an uninhibited amount of proof of parking, that you go to 30%, so that if a commercial property needs to provide, say, 10 spaces, they only really need to provide seven spaces, and then provide proof that they can build another three spaces. So it lowers the amount of initial investment into the property, so that the business could potentially get in there and get going. You know, I just have some small diagrams as to how it works. So, you know, if we, if we run into a situation where there's new retail being built, there's enough room for stormwater, you know, we see this kind of parking area, and I'm sorry, I crudely did this, this morning, but all of the different colored blocks, except for the smaller green one, smaller green one is the dumpster, the other ones are for cars. You know, this is kind of either a new development, or kind of a redevelopment for a particular property. Let's say, okay, well, they're getting a lot of interest, people start parking just to the south of that parking lot, so they're parking on grass, they're destroying the grass, they're destroying landscaping. Staff would have the ability to say, well, this is a zoning violation, you're not parking on the surface, you're not parking in your parking lot, and then make them go through and put in the rest of the parking spaces. So that's kind of generally it. You know, the comprehensive plan supports this kind of idea, and sort of a mix between looking at the broader goals of the city, and trying to get redevelopment, trying to work with property owners, and so private property interests, sort of they having an understanding of how many employees, or how many customers that they're going to have over time, be able to build the amount of parking that they need up to that point, and if they need more, then they'll build more. With zoning criteria, the criteria are also meant for this. It supports redevelopment projects and small businesses, and so it, staff does feel like it does meet the comprehensive plan and zoning criteria. So we are recommending moving forward with this ordinance to City Council to allow proof of parking up to 30%.
We have questions for Harry. Bart?
So if we were to take the old parking... Okay, all right, I was needing that context.
So would this have kept them from having...
Yes, Mr. Chair, I can, I can answer that. So when we're looking specifically at the ordinance, it is just for commercial zoning districts, so if it's a residential zoning district, it would not apply. I also was taking a look at this, and I think that there is some concerns over reducing the amount of parking for residential uses currently. So with that in mind, you know, even looking at a residential use in a commercial zone, say like Central Business District, or, you know, Midwest Plats, is actually on C2, but it's next to Midwest Storage out there on Fourth or Highway 60. The reduction would not be allowed for residential uses in commercial zones. So it would not apply at all to what we consider to be more of a residential use.
So how would that work then?
Yeah, so how it would work with Divine Mercy is that Divine Mercy, the Urban Flea Market property, whatever you want to call it, that would still need to show, hey, you know, we have, you know, all of this room that's available for parking, and then they would be able to reduce that down to 70% of what's needed at the time that they're going in and operating. And sort of, over time, if it's determined, hey, you need more parking, you're, you know, causing some sort of traffic issue regarding parking, then they would have to build out either all, or at least part of that 30%. But you still need, you still need to show that you can provide all the parking that you need on your property. It just reduces the initial investment needed in order to get going.
The questions. Steve?
I understand the concept, and part of it, but you keep going back to when they're parking illegally, and I come back to, if the business really gets going, and the cars are parking and disrupting the other businesses by parking in front of either the on-street parking, or parking in their parking lot, when does, what is the avenue to get them going?
Sure, Mr. Chair, so, you know, on-street parking is, you know, it's free for anyone. So if, as long as on-street parking is allowed on a street, someone could use that parking. I don't think that there are currently really any ways, and I've never seen a situation where the city has been able to tightly control that outside of, say, a permit. So it would be really difficult, I think, for the city of Faribault to do that. We haven't done that before.
Sure, well, we kind of have, because we restrict parking around the, the senior high school during the days, and otherwise students park in the neighborhood, and that's, when we were talking about Divine Mercy, that's what, let's just say, he didn't have to have enough parking, now you're really frying all of the neighbors with parking cars there. Is there an avenue for the, the people there to have, let's say, a time limit or something on the, the on-street parking, so it allows them to at least have guests come over and park in front of their house? I understand that, but Divine Mercy is right next to a neighborhood. You've got residential right across the street.
So, Mr. Chair, you know, again, on-street parking, as long as it's allowed there, is free for anyone to use. If I wanted to, I could go park in a neighborhood and then walk to work.
I understand all that, but...
Right. So, you know, if, if, as long as that's allowed there, there's very, you know, unless we go to some sort of permit system, or engineering, and public works, and fire, deem, you know, particular route not viable for on-street parking, there's very little room that we have there. You know, again, staff could also look at a situation where if we get enough complaints, maybe we do bring this back, and maybe we do take a look at, you know, is there, is there, is there a particular issue with that, with that project?
Would this be a conditional use, then, if they were going to undersize their parking lot? Or is this just at staff's discretion?
This is, yeah, this would be, currently as it's written, would be at, at staff's discretion. So if we see an issue where we, you know, an applicant comes in, and they're a particular business, and we know that they're going to need all of, all of the parking that's required, because we have other good examples of, you know, some sort of traffic, or some sort of parking issue with very similar uses, we can tell them, no, you're going to do all of this, and through the appeal process, they would have to come through Planning Commission and City Council to appeal that decision from staff.
Art's got his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we have many, you don't need to tell us which ones, but have there been many situations where this is an issue? where this is an issue for applicants not being able to afford the parking lot? Or is this something we're just looking forward to in the future to make this available?
Sure, I can give you one really good example, and it's something that we're still currently working through, which is the Mataschek Implement Dealership, where they know how many employees they have, and they have a very nuanced understanding about how many customers that they're going to get in on a daily or even a weekly basis. I mean, they're farm implement dealers. They, they kind of know who's around here, and they know who's going to come in. They are required to put in, I think it's somewhere around seventy spaces for their entire property. They do not need seventy spaces. And so, this would actually, if they were to take it, they would reduce it down to somewhere around fifty-five, which even then is potentially a lot more than they really need. It's more of a trying to balance between some of the concerns, very real concerns for commercial properties just not having parking, even though they have all this room where they could put parking, and, you know, a situation where they're requiring more parking than somebody really needs. So, it's kind of like the thirty percent, we can, we can move that around, we can massage it a little bit. Staff doesn't really feel tied to thirty percent, it's just kind of an idea as to where we start. So, this is, this is kind of an issue, like, one such issue that we're running into.
Pam's up.
I just want a clarifying question. This is a public hearing, correct?
Correct. Go ahead. I'm, I'm, I'm with you. I hear that, and I respect that. If we're done with questions, we do have Mr. Underaus still in the crowd. Steve, you got anything for us on public input?
So, this is an opportunity to keep the areas in the green until there's determined that there is actually a need to have.
That is the entirety of our public. That was public hearing. We closed public, and now we go to Leslie.
I just wanted to answer the question you had. Is this, it addresses a specific circumstance? And I think we, we can probably acknowledge from the professional standards for parking, is this is something that's being explored. Right sizing parking is a phrase in the financial world, and trying to understand the nuances of what exactly those percentages should be. Like Harry said, this is typically a challenge for the redevelopment sites to begin with. We want to be able to give the opportunities for someone who is not a community owner, also give credence to those businesses who develop in other communities nationwide, who know their parking statistics down to the nth degree. So, the staff consideration was, in some circumstances, we obliterate all parking requirements. Do we let the applicants decide for us? Or do we look at our standards? And to be amended when this potential study could be made. This is the solution that we've had, that we serve as best service for the community.
Pam's had her hand up, and I think she's got an opinion on something. And then Steve, and then Bart.
So, I've actually been on a panel with a parent who had the same exact issue come up, and the previous planning commission, so it left these plans of having no certain requirements. And I've seen that be effective in different communities. I love, love, love this. I've seen it work. In other communities, and I saw it work. And to Steve's point, yeah, Divine, I'm one block away from Divine. There's a big band concert at BBA, they're parked at my house, so I under, I understand that concern. I don't think realistically that's going to be a potential for more green space. If it's not used, it's green, and it's great. But it's still there if we need it. They have a hundred more spaces than we need. That could have been put to a lot of other places. The mall is always empty. So, I think this is a beautiful and lovely initiative.
Steve, and then Bart.
I like the concept. Part of me wants to see this as something, when it comes, if you're going to redevelop something, you'd probably have a public hearing on it, because they'd have to either replant it or you're saying no.
There are some sites that come before you where they're approved with the zoning district for the use that they're proposing. So, not every single application for a development site would come before you for consideration. Yes, there would be some, but there are other...
Yeah, I'm good.
Bart.
Thank you. So, someone does this, and let's say we give them thirty percent, and they sell the property to somebody else. Then have that in front of us again? Because at this point, it could be a different business with a different use.
There, so, I think part of that includes an assumption about that the project comes before planning commission anyway? You know, yeah, sure, if it, if it does potentially, like, if they're trying to change some, some bits and pieces of it. Let's say, for example, Malika Autobody, you know, builds their other building, and then they say, "You know what? What if we just went somewhere else?" And then someone else comes into that property, and they want to expand it, and they also want to utilize this thirty percent reduction for parking. You know, at that point, yeah, you would be able to review it alongside the other considerations to it, which would be the conditionally used permit. Does that kind of answer your question?
We've talked about different situations with other properties and how, so that's why I was kind of interested in how that would...
Yeah, a change in ownership wouldn't necessarily bring something like this to the planning commission, but some other applications would.
Tina's got her hand up.
I, I applaud staff. I think Sam is spot on. I love the phrase right-sized parking. I think that every project and application is unique, and for staff to take the opportunity to evaluate whether or not a farm implement company needs seventy parking spaces or not, right? I, I just feel like there's, there's opportunity there, so I appreciate movement in this direction.
Other discussion?
I'll second it.
Got a motion in a second on what was presented to us. Any discussion? Will vote? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
That carries. Now, that's it for the public hearings. Some housekeeping stuff will combine requests to be heard, item for discussion. Harry, do you want to take the lead? Do you want me to take the lead? Or do you want to enter this?
Sure. Ms. Chair, so, we, we have a request to make our next two planning commission meetings virtual. There are some reasons as to why a planning commission might want to allow virtual meetings in order to accommodate somebody that might be running into some sort of medical issue, or they would like to, you know, still be a part of the planning commission but unable to physically be there. There also might be some, you know, circumstances where a planning commissioner is elsewhere, but there's a really important planning commission, perhaps one that is, you know, if quorum or not. And so, you know, we could run into these potential situations. We can have a meeting be virtually attended. There is an opportunity for that. There are some things that we would need to nail down to completely understand. Some of these things would include meeting some of the Minnesota statutes. There's a particular statute on if we are going to have a meeting virtually, what the requirements would be. I'm trying to think of, like, where else.
The other thing, then, the advice of the city attorney, was that it, the first hurdle is the planning commission needs to discuss it, and then we vote whether we want to do that or not, correct?
Yes, thank you, yeah.
So, even though it's not on the agenda, this is going to be one of those rare times that there'll actually be discussion and a motion and a vote on something. So, there's a request. Ed, go ahead.
Question, is that specific to planning commission or all commissions and city council?
Any and all boards, commissions, councils, tendencies.
But each individual board would vote, so like, if this came to the park board, they'd vote.
Okay, so it's, each board's going to vote?
Right, we're not telling all the other boards.
That's what I'm asking.
That's what I thought, Steve.
We did it in the past, it worked. I'm totally in favor of it.
Question, when did we do it?
You forgot we had COVID?
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, yeah, okay. I guess now that I have the floor, and that's actually a good tip, yeah, when there's COVID and we had to do it all remotely, yeah. I'm just going to speak as just kind of my preference here now, and tonight's a good example. Chair in a meeting, there's a lot of body language. Ends up, there's a, I don't like chairing a meeting where I have people in the room and I got one or two people on a screen. Hard meeting to chair. And since we're an advisory committee, it'd be different if we were the council and they're kind of elected to be there. We're an advisory committee, you know. I would just prefer not to. That's my personal point. I wasn't going to make it right now, but that was a good point. Yeah, if it's something like COVID where we're all on a screen, well, yeah, it works.
I mean, a broken leg, somebody that's just given birth to having a kid and they can't come here, why not? I mean, they're doing it, they're doing it with the U.S. House of Representatives, and they can make it work, so to hell with it, we can make it work.
So, sorry, yeah, yeah. Mr. Chair, yeah, I can jump in on that. So, under the current Minnesota statutes, you do have to have at least one person be present.
Okay, so that changed after COVID, then?
Well, COVID might have been different. That might have actually been emergency rules put in place. So, you know, I can kind of go through some of the, some of the requirements here. So, all members of the body participating in the meeting, wherever their physical location can hear and see one another and can hear and see all discussion and testimony presented at the meeting. Members of the public present at the regular meeting can hear and see all discussion and testimony in all of the votes presented. All votes must be conducted by roll call, and each location of which a member of the body is present must be open and accessible to the public. That's kind of, for people personally, what I've seen in other jurisdictions, kind of been the kicker. Like, do I really want people in my home? Yes.
Was medical or personal?
I bet if it's a medic...
So, there is, there is an exception. So, a member that's been advised by a healthcare professional against being in a public place for personal or family medical reasons.
Question, are you asking that our next two meetings be virtual for the whole body or for the whole body?
It would have to be for, so, here's, 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 here's the nuance to that. Is that there's some logistics that staff would have to figure out. I don't even know if we can under this new setup. Like, that's, that's part of the issue, is I first have to understand, okay, what are the limitations? And part of it is going to be having either, you know, whether it's one camera or multiple cameras kind of facing every planning commissioner, bikes associated with that. There would have to be a very clear, we need to have to have a good internet from wherever you're trying to virtually come in from, to have to have your camera open for that and your microphone. There are probably things that I don't even know about, this particular room, how easy it is or how easy it might be. I think that this is, at least for me, just trying to say, okay, is this something that the planning commission is willing to undertake? Staff will do their best to figure out. I don't know if it's even possible.
Thank you. Bart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we would be ill-sighted not to have this in place, especially with, you know, cold and flu season comes up, or maybe SARS outbreak, or, you know, maybe three of us are sick with, with something communicable. And I think having something already set in place, already ready, already tested, would then allow us to, you know, if something occurred like that, or the chair finds himself in another surgery, you know, he can still chair the meeting if he wants to after, you know, he's sitting there doing his rehab. So, I think it would be something that we could have in place, and so that way, if an emergency or a bad situation with a communicable disease is coming up, we already have all these things in place, so we're not trying to scramble at the last minute.
Ed?
Are you suggesting in place but not ready to go, just in case we need it?
So, with Ed's question, I think that it, the chair had already brought it up, that it's not just, not just because someone's not feeling well or they're on vacation to use it, unless it's something that they really need to be on, but that would have to be something probably for planners. But this would be more of a situation where we already have all these in place, so that way, when we need to use it, it's already solved, the problem's already, already ready, we already know what we need to do, and that way, we keep that continuity going.
And, and I'm happy to disclose, I made the request. I have to travel for work. I'll be in Georgia on June 2nd. And then I'm having knee replacement surgery, and I won't be able to attend in person on the 16th. I didn't want to miss two meetings in a row. It's not that I'm going on vacation, they're just, I have a work trip, and then I have some surgery. So, I made the request. For, for my planning commission, we're all virtual. We do it through teams, there's a monitor on the wall, and, and so, I didn't know it would be this type of a thing, but we're, it's a different county, right? And so, but I appreciate the consideration, and if staff is, if you're okay with it and staff can figure it out, it would be great. If not, it's okay, I'll just bug you all about what you did while I wasn't here. FOMO is real. And, and then also, the, the other part of that is, is I still have an opportunity to contribute my thoughts in writing if I'm not able to attend. So, I just wanted to not miss meetings, that's all.
Bart.
So, to Tina's point, it's not the entire body that will be on virtual.
Yes, I think...
For these next two weeks, the specifics, but we would be establishing a policy going forward. I think, I think our feeling was is that we would all be virtual for the next two weeks. That's how I think a lot of the...
No, this would just be, that's what I was saying, that there'd be six of us here and one of us on a screen.
I'm still in favor of it. I think it should be an option. I like what you said very well. You could have a cold, the flu, the flu's coming back. There's no point in showing up and sniveling all over and giving us all of that treat, but your input's still worthwhile. I mean, it's, to me, it's, it's a no-brainer. It's, we should do it. The technology's here. We've done it before during COVID, and it worked. There was nobody that, I don't see anything that was wrong with it.
You have a medical exception. If your doctor says... Medical exception.
I don't think you're going to get anybody that's going to show up at your house. It's possible, but I...
So, I, now there's a lot of cross-conversation here, and points are all well-taken. I think, well, I don't know, I was, I'll stop. So, but we do need a motion and a vote to do something. Bart?
One last question. Will we set what the medical exception is, or is that something that's in the state statute? No, I'm so sorry. Let me rephrase. So, when someone calls you and says they have a medical reason why they want to stay, that would be sufficient, correct? would be sufficient, correct?
There, I have no clue. And at that point, I'd want to talk to the city attorney about what.
In defense.
So that, so that we can figure out, I'm sorry. Because if someone is going to be virtual, and they're coming in from a location that's not real, we have to notify and include that as a part of the public.
All I was going to say is, in defense of Harry, we got this this morning, so there's a couple emails with the city attorney, so there's a lot that Harry doesn't know, and let's not blame him for that. This is just, you know, we're kind of drinking with a fire hose on it.
Yeah. You make a motion?
No, there's not a motion yet, Bart still got the floor, and then Ed.
Go ahead.
No, that's, I, I give the floor to Ed.
Mine's a simple question, just because it came up, and you don't know this yet. I will not be able to make it to the next meeting because I'm going to be out of town for family reasons. I don't know if I could dial in if it's virtual, because I don't know the schedule, it's not my place to determine the schedule. So if I, I was going to talk to you later, it's my, is that something that would be counted as an absence, and say that I will be out of town? Not that it matters, but the reality is, what are the rules of engagement? By the way, I'm going to be out of town. Get in the corner upstairs in the bedroom and get my computer and go on, I'm just asking out of pure, it sounds like she's going to be gone next meeting.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, I would need a minute to pull up our new bylaws, because they did actually change before they were based off of.
Fair enough.
Excused and unexcused, and I think now. Give me, give me a second to pull that up.
To just get this over with, is I'd make a motion that we allow staff to explore the opportunity to have a virtual meeting, and if it's possible, we can meet the requirements, do it, if we can't, well, it's the way it goes.
Staff is the key word.
Yep, staff is the key word.
Okay, Ed's got the second. I know your intent, but phrase it that to allow commissioners to attend the meeting.
Sure.
Because the way you worded it made it sound like it could have.
I agree.
I knew where you were going.
Okay.
Harry.
Ms. Chair, I think the city attorney, in the discussion that I had with him, I think that he asked that you focus on specific dates, so that you kind of decide ahead of time that you're going to do virtual meetings. So the, the motion would need to include, next to planning commission.
So you're saying the motion needs to allow commissioners? Then it's almost like a trial run, see how it goes if we want to.
Sure.
That still meets the intent. Harry, you're good with that?
Next two meetings, yeah.
Anybody else want to add another date on there?
Ms. Chair, I will just very quickly note, so state statute allows up to three of these easy. Only three, yes.
Okay.
Each member.
Oh, three for each member.
So like Tina's using up her two, I still have three in my book, it's not like a body, we can only do that three times.
Yeah, that's, that's the way that I understand that.
Okay, so I think Steve's motion, everybody understands the intent. Got the second. I'm not trying to brush it here, but are we ready for a vote? Anybody got anything else?
Oh, meet at Tina's house.
I'm going to be in Georgia.
Okay, so I've got the motion, I've got the second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. I'm the only no, okay. Motion carries then, six, one, we're good. Okay. Board and commission, city council, staff.
Yeah, Ms. Chair, just super briefly, because I know that it's been a longer meeting, and people probably want to go home, but at the last city council meeting, there were a few items that were brought forward. One of them was the Shoreland ordinance that you all voted on at the last planning commission meeting, that sailed through pretty easily. There's a lot of interest in it, in making it easier for applicants to submit projects within Shoreland. So that, that went through. There was another item for a annexation, which annexations historically for Fairboil have skipped planning commission and gone straight to city council, so I apologize about that. But it's an annex, it's an annexation on the north side, next to the Northern Industrial Park, the kind of little.
Is it that one little farm that we've been kind of working around for 20 years?
One of them?
Yeah.
Sort of, so if you could think of where the future intersection between 150th or, I think it's Kazaa 9, and I-35 is going to be, it's that area, right there, but on the right side or the, or the east side of I-35.
That, east side of 35 by Kazaa, so north of Metcon.
Yes, it's actually just north of Dycon.
Oh, I thought it was between Metcon and.
North of that, so it's actually.
What side of the freeway? Sorry.
What side of the freeway?
On the east side.
The east side?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're not, we're not skipping, skipping the interstate to get to the other side yet. So that actually had its first reading, so there were no issues with that at that time. It's going for a second reading at the next city council meeting, as well as the Shoreland. The other item that went through, and this will eventually come in form, in front of planning commission, is an EAW, or environmental assessment worksheet for Archer data centers. So I think back in, I want to say it was 2022 or 2023, there's an annexation on the north side of Northern Industrial Park, again, the little, is it, like island that we have on the north side of Fairboil, so it's just north of that. Archer Data Centers has bought that property, and they want to do up to 500,000 square feet of data center, and so because it triggers a EAW, it has to be brought before, it's currently going through the 30-day review period. There will be between now and when it comes to planning commission, it will go to the environmental commission for review and recommendation. After that, it'll come to planning commission after the 30 days, after they've made revisions based off the comments, and then eventually to city council.
Steve, go ahead.
One quick comment would be, is this going to go all the way up to County Road 9? Is it going to affect any future development of County Road 9? Let's ask that question, or you don't even have to answer me, but that would be my concern.
The Archer Data Centers project?
Yes.
So that, I believe they're utilizing both sides of that little creek that runs through that property, so yes, I think eventually the idea is to have development kind of on the south side, right next to the industrial park, and then kind of flip it over to the Kazaa 9 side.
Because that's where there's a proposed interchange there, that's why I'm asking the question about County Road 9.
Sure, you know, maybe I can bring up the map, and that might be a little easier.
They spent a lot of money so far already.
Going rate for diamond interchange in a freeway is about 40 million, and they haven't identified a funding source. They can talk an awful lot, but 40 million's the, get in.
Understand. You never know what happens.
Yes, same.
See, you put in a interchange for a golf course in Austin, so I think we could eventually get one here.
I don't know if we have it, I don't know where you guys can see.
We got, we got the giant Fairboil logo.
We see.
Oh, there we go, now something's happening.
So, the annexation location, so that's actually this property right here. Future interchange is going to be right here.
Yep.
Dycon is just to the south.
Yep.
Archer Data Centers, they're wanting to use this property. They've first talked about putting in a building, BB2 on the south side, and then I believe they eventually want to go up here on the.
Are we done for the day? That's it for agenda. Bart.
Make a motion to.
Got a motion to adjourn from Bart, is there a second?
Second.
Sam's got the second, all those in favor say aye.